I'd like to call the Mentor City Council Regular Meeting of Tuesday, May 16th, 2017, to order. The invocation this evening will be given by Councilman Marn.
Heavenly Father, we thank thee for this day. Help us to use good judgment for the business at hand and guide us in wisdom with a continuing sense of truth and fairness for the community we represent.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Here.
Mr. Blake?
Here.
Mr. Donovan?
Here.
Mrs. Dowling?
Here.
Mr. Kirchner?
Here.
Mr. Krieger?
Here.
Mr. Landik?
Here.
Councils in receipt of the minutes of the work session of April 18th, 2017?
To move.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Public hearings, we have none. New legislation. Ordinance number seventeen dash O dash forty-one.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement on behalf of the City of Mentor with the Ohio Patrolmen's Benevolent Association Sergeants and Lieutenants Union and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiac.
Thank you, Mentor President, members of council. And the first three ordinances on your agenda tonight, I will speak to collectively. These represent our full-time police and fire officers. We have reached agreement with each of these three unions on substantially the same terms, which is a mod-- which, for the most part, maintains current benefit levels and nearly all other terms of the agreement, with a modest increase in wages at the amount of two and a half percent over the three-year period of the agreement. I would say that this has been one of the-- been very, very pleased to be able to work with the unions this year. The city and our safety forces enjoy a very good working relationship. I think we all agree that we're proud of the work that they do and the manner in which they perform that work. And I think everyone at the table was very reasonable this go-around, recognizing that strong relationship, being interested in maintaining it. And Chief, I would offer you opportunity to say some comments if you'd like to.
Because I think it's a fair agreement of, you know, what the gentlemen and ladies and gentlemen are having to do out there today and what's going on in the world today in our society, I think they really deserve it. And it was great that the city and the unions got together and was able to do this without going through long-prolonged negotiations and getting a lot of stuff involved, so I would ask for your consideration in this.
Gentlemen?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Marn?
I would just like to thank everyone from the chiefs down to our part-timers and Mr. Zampidro for working long and hard on this. I mean, it's a far different cry from, as Ray could attest, years ago, and Mr. Henig, what we went through to get things done. But we're all working together as a team to make Mentor a better place, so I know I could speak for mine about that for myself, but the rest of council, we really appreciate it. So, thank you for everyone that's involved. Thank you, Mr. Zampidro.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Ordinance number seventeen dash O dash forty-one has been approved. Ordinance number seventeen dash O dash forty-two.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement on behalf of the City of Mentor with the Ohio Patrolmen's Benevolent Association Union and declaring an emergency.
Gentlemen?
Move to suspend.
Second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Ordinance number seventeen dash O dash forty-two has been approved. Ordinance number seventeen dash O dash forty-three.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement on behalf of the City of Mentor with the International Association of Firefighters Union and declaring an emergency.
Gentlemen?
Move to suspend.
Second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Ordinance number seventeen dash O dash forty-three has been approved. Mr. Philippiac.
Mentor President, excuse me. Chief Searls, would you like to make any comments on behalf of the fire officers?
I would just like to echo the comments that have already been made, and we're busier than ever, but it's a privilege to serve this community. Thank you.
Ordinance number seventeen dash O dash forty-four.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Osborne Inc. for the purchase of concrete and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiac.
Thank you, Mentor President. Mr. Schweitzer, please.
Thank you. Over the course of a year, the Department of Public Works performs many maintenance and construction activities involving the use of concrete. Typically, the aggregate amount purchased is close to, if not slightly, in excess of $50,000. Bids were opened on 26 April for a wide-range materials used by both the DPW and the Parks and Rec Department. It's unlikely that any other items would exceed $50,000. However, it is my recommendation that the city enter into a contract with Osborne Inc. for the purchase of concrete at the prices indicated below. Thank you.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Ordinance number seventeen dash O dash forty-four has been approved. Ordinance number seventeen dash O dash forty-five.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Generator Systems LLC for the purchase of a 275 KW generator and transfer switch and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiac.
Thank you, Mentor President, and this is for the pump station at State Route 306 for under the railroad line. Mr. Schweitzer?
Thank you. The 275-kilowatt generator that provides emergency power to three pumps at the State Route 306 pump station is no longer functional. This generator, the existing generator, is probably in excess of 30 years old. It's my recommendation that this generator be replaced as quickly as possible. A new, comparatively-sized generator is available from Generator Systems LLC via the State of Ohio State Term Schedule Purchasing Program. The cost of this generator and the new transfer switch is $60,472. Although delivery time is approximately seven weeks, a portable generator is available from a local company that could provide emergency power in an emergency. Thank you.
Gentlemen?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Ordinance number seventeen dash O dash forty-five has been approved. Ordinance number seventeen dash O dash forty-six.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Chagrin Valley Paving Inc. for the resurfacing of City Hall parking lots and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiac.
Thank you, Mentor President, and every year, city council appropriates dollars for us to maintain the parking lots at our various city facilities. This year, we have targeted City Hall. It's a long overdue work. We've been putting it off in anticipation and part for the amphitheater work and the heavy trucks coming through there, but we have timed the completion of this agreement to be completed prior to-- so, post-construction, heavy truck usage, construction period for the amphitheater, but prior to our July 4th opening. So, with some luck, we should have a nice-looking parking lots for our opening day.
Gentlemen?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Ordinance number seventeen dash O dash forty-six has been approved. Ordinance number seventeen dash O dash forty-seven.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to award a bid contract to Carvo Paving Company for the Lake 2947 project and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiac.
Thank you, Mentor President. This is for the widening project on Mentor Avenue. Mr. Swiger, please.
Thank you, Mr. Philippiac. The City of Mentor applied for and will receive approximately $2 million in federal safety funding for construction and inspection services for the Lake 2947 project. This represents about 90% of total project cost. Project will construct a left-turn lane from Center Street to Hart Street. It will also construct a second left-turn lane, which is westbound to southbound at the Center Street Mentor Avenue intersection. Road will also be resurfaced within the project limits, which is approximately 1,700 feet. Five bids were opened on Friday, April 21st, for the project. The bid package consisted of a base bid and one alternate. Five bids range from a low bid of approximately $2 million to a high bid of approximately $2,200,000. It's been determined that Carvo Paving Company of Stowe, Ohio submitted the lowest total bid of $2,031,417.51. Engineer's opinion of probable construction cost was $1,900,000. A review of the bid from Carvo Paving Company indicates it's in conformance with all contract requirements. Therefore, recommended that a contract be awarded to Carvo Paving who are experienced and qualified to perform this work in the amount of $2,031,417.51. The scheduled completion date for the project is June 30th of 2018. Thank you.
Gentlemen?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Marn?
Question in terms of the percentage that we have to pay on these different projects. I mean, normally, it's between-- state picks up between 70 and 90% of one of their state projects, pretty much?
Say 80% is pretty common.
Okay. So, what-- how do we get to, like, some of the projects where, you know, they pick up 90% to other projects, like the one coming up here where, you know, they kicked it up to 85%, and then we're gonna do the rest, the rest of the half a mile? How does the percentage-- we now know how the roads, how they rate the roads, but how do they-- in terms of financing, how do we zero in better to further budget in the future about what they're gonna pay and not pay?
Well, I think in most cases, it's 80%. In some cases, we have received an additional, like, in State Route 84 project, an additional 5%. This is a safety project, and safety funding can go up to 90%, so that's what the difference in this case.
Okay. Is there ever a time, like, for example, like, this project is based on safety, and they're telling us that we're doing this, or they're doing slash us doing this project in our city? Is there ever a time where it's over 90%? Or you get additional grants to make it to almost 100%?
Well, it's very rare. I think this is one of the few times we received 100% in funding in any category, which was the engineering design. The state covered 100% of the cost.
Okay, so, for always budgeting, we're looking at least 80%. If we get 85, we're thrilled. We're excited, and we get 90-plus percent, we're thrilled.
Ecstatic.
Exactly. And 50% is actually becoming more common on capacity-increasing projects, like lane additions. 50% is about a new normal.
Okay, so, what would happen if, like, for example, this project we're talking about now, we decide, well, really not needed. You know, we wanna take that money and use it in other projects, like--
You wouldn't be able to--
There's no way that they've come acc-- I mean, I know you either use it or lose it, but there's no other way around it that we've found or come across, or anybody else has come across in all these years.
No, I mean, you know, the funding formula, there's a statewide system that we utilize and the region utilizes through NOAC in a lot of cases for major road rehabilitation or expansion projects, and that money would simply go back and fall into the higher priorities. There's money allocated within our ODOT district as well for enhancements, and we take advantage of that on projects like we're gonna talk about here in a moment on State Route 84, for example. But I think it's important on this particular project really grew out of a ODOT initiative--
Right.
--who identified this particular corridor along Mentor Avenue, really studied the majority of the business corridor on Mentor Avenue, and because of the high accident numbers here, and they identified this portion in particular as having the need for the increased turn lane availability and left-turn lane going southbound on Center Street. So, that's why they have a separate pool of money set aside for safety enhancements, which in this case wasn't particularly difficult for us to compete for because it was safety-related.
I was just trying to think outside the box, because, you know, we went through on our next ordinance coming up in '84 for the last two, call it, two, two and a half years.
Sure.
And then with the streets that are needed and the headlands and the cost of those, so I was just--
Yeah, and, you know, good example, Plaza Boulevard's a pretty good example of where we were able to combine a couple of different grant programs to help offset some of that local portion. You know, sometimes it's rare, but sometimes we can use ODOT funding, what we would-- OPWC funding, for example, to match a federal grant-funded road program, but, you know, it's hard to do that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Ordinance number seventeen dash O dash forty-seven has been approved.
Ordinance number seventeen dash O dash forty-eight. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to submit construction engineering services documents to the Ohio Department of Transportation and enter into a construction engineering services contract with Quality Control Inspection, Inc. for the Lake 2947 Mentor Avenue left-turn widening project and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiac.
Thank you, Mentor President. Mr. Swiger?
Thank you, Mr. Philippiac. As a condition of using federal funding for the construction engineering services for the widening and resurfacing of Mentor Avenue, city was required to follow a qualification-based selection process for consultant selection. This involved advertising through the High Department of Transportation's website. In doing so, the city received five responses from consultants offering these services. Quality Control Inspection, or QCI, was selected as the highest-ranked firm. The ranking took into account the firm's project manager, the strength and experience of the assigned staff, the firm's current workload, consultant's past performance and the project approach. City subsequently received a scope of services and fee document from QCI for review and approval. As part of the QBS process, the city was required to select a consultant based on qualification and subsequently agree or negotiate a contract price. Total estimated fee submitted by QCI for construction management services is $266,964. This will be billed on an hourly basis and would not exceed-- would not be exceeded without prior written authorization. QCI possesses the proper experience and qualifications necessary to perform the construction engineering services. City has utilized QCI for construction engineering services on past federally funded projects, including State Route 306, Munson Road, Jordan Drive, and Heisey Road. It's recommended that city council authorize the city manager to enter into a construction engineering services agreement with QCI for amount not to exceed $266,964. I would mention that federal-state safety funding will cover approximately 90% of this cost. Thank you.
Gentlemen?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Ordinance number seventeen dash O dash forty-eight has been approved. Ordinance number seventeen dash O dash forty-nine.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to award a bid contract to Roniak Brothers Paving, Inc. for the Lake 84-811 project and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiac.
Thank you, Mentor President. Members of council, this is gonna seem a little odd to you, but ordinance 49 and ordinance 50 are awarding contracts for the same project to the general contractor, and the explanation as to why you are authorizing two separate contractors here is that this is the State Route 84 resurfacing project, which we spent a lot of time talking about here in chambers. Council will recall that we had this-- this was approved by ODOT's District Office for resurfacing from Garfield Road West to Route 306. The city strongly desired and had appealed multiple times and had reconsideration given for including the section between Center Street and Garfield Road on State Route 84. We reached a compromise on this, which was, I think, Mr. Marn had just alluded to just a few minutes back, where they would not include this as part of-- they did not agree with our pavement assessment rating, but they did agree to increase the overall participation from 80 to 85%. In our mind, coming pretty close to offsetting that cost, so we included that in the project as an alternate. We received-- the low bid for this project was provided to you by Roniak Brothers Paving. However, their bid was deemed to be nonconforming by the Department of Transportation due to some MBE requirements. The gist of this is that when the alternate was added, they fell below the required percentage of total project amount that would be dedicated to be performed by the minority business enterprise. Their argument is that it should not be applied to anything but the main portion of the contract, the base bid. So, to avoid having to delay this project, ultimately, that's a decision that the state will have to determine. We will obviously follow whatever they believe is appropriate. So, we are asking council to give my office authorization to award a bid to either of these two contractors, Roniak being the lowest bidder and Chagrin Valley Paving being the next lowest bidder. So, if it turns out that their, Roniak's bid is nonconforming, we will award this to Chagrin Valley. Did you want to add anything, Dave?
Second.
I just wanted to add that we just received information from ODOT that they made a ruling on this, and that the bid submitted by Roniak Brothers was found to be responsive based on some additional information that was provided to ODOT. So, I think at this point, we could--
That's my information, too. And so, the recommendation would be to award Roniak and then to postpone indefinitely the Chagrin Valley. So, we, you know--
Does that include alternatives? It does.
Very good.
Then, Mr. President? What is-- would be the, pretty close to exact amount, then, would be the difference in our share, since they're kicking up another 5% on the western end and we're taking, you know, the eastern end? Do we have that number?
I believe the additional funding was about $50,000.
That's what I thought it was, too. Okay. All right. Let's get that back to us, one of your emails or memos, something, so council all knows to answer residents' questions. Appreciate it. Thanks.
Good news is, all of that--
It's gonna be done, right.
--will be performed.
After two and a half years.
Without two separate contractors in two different time periods coming in to do it, which would have seemed silly to the general public and us, too.
Okay. Thank you.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Ordinance number seventeen dash O dash forty-nine has been approved.
I would just like to add to, in the last second delivery of this information and the reason why, you know, it wasn't more internalized here, is that this particular component was handled exclusively by ODOT. Now, when we did the bid opening here, you know, to award the bid and, you know, the numbers and all that, that was done here, but this, you know, other component was handled by ODOT in Columbus, so we were kept out of the loop on that. They wanted to focus on that point, not only on this contract, but on all these contracts. And so, that lent some confusion to getting this final resolution, because it wasn't something that was in our control at all. It was in their control, and we were kind of waiting on them. So, that's very unusual, that we don't have every bit of the bid opening and all the components here, and so that, yeah. Just wanted to let you know that.
Okay, so, I need a motion now to postpone indefinitely?
You gotta call it, don't you? Call the--
Yeah, the next one after a tread.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ordinance number seventeen dash O dash fifty.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to award a bid contract to Chagrin Valley Paving for the Lake 84-811 project and declaring an emergency.
Mentor President, I would move that we postpone it, move the motion to postpone this indefinitely.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Ordinance number seventeen dash O dash fifty has been postponed indefinitely. Ordinance number seventeen dash O dash fifty-one.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a construction engineering services contract with Quality Control Inspection, Inc. for the Lake 84-811 SR84 resurfacing project and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Swiger, please.
Thank you, Mr. Philippiac. Just a quick question. Did we finish with the construction portion of the-- are we going on to the consultant services?
Consultant services.
Okay. Thank you. As a condition of using federal funding for the resurfacing of State Route 84, the city was required to follow a qualification-based selection process, again, for consultant selection services. This involved advertising on the High Department of Transportation website for the services, and we also received five responses for consultant construction services. Quality Control Inspection, or QCI, was selected as the highest-ranked firm, and once again, the ranking took into account the firm's project manager, strength and experience of the staff, firm's current workload, consultant's past performance, and project approach. And city has subsequently received a scope of services and fee document from QCI. As part of the QBS process, we were required to select the consultant based on qualification As part of the QBS process, we were required to select the consultant based on qualification and then negotiate a price. Total estimated fee submitted by QCI for construction management services was one-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand, four-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars. This would be billed on hourly basis and not exceed without prior written authorization. QCI possesses the proper experience qualifications necessary to perform the work. It's recommended city council authorize the city manager to enter into a construction engineering services agreement with QCI for an amount not to exceed one-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand, four-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars. Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Blake?
If I could just ask a question, I mean, we have a consultant scoring summary which scores QCI real high, and that seems to be why we, we get them. Do, do we score that for the summary, or is that something ODOT scores? Because it seems like they, they, they're, they're at the top each time. And, and I know we've been happy with them in the past. I was just asking how that scoring summary was, came.
Correct. We review a pretty detailed scope of services document that each consultant provides and, and they, we do rank them. We have a team within the City of Metro Engineering Department that ranks the firms. And they have scored high and they've done a very good job.
So, so what, what they do for us in the past is, is evaluated going forward in terms of choosing them again.
Correct.
So, th- this is something we score in-house as to how they've worked with us on other projects before.
That's correct.
Yeah, I just, you know, we don't want anyone thinking that, gee, they win every single bid to, to do the, the consulting. But it, you know, it's there in the numbers, so it's completely.
Councilman Blake, I'd add to that too, that we use ODOT methodology for that scoring procedure and that each of the members of that committee independently scores those and then they review their results collectively.
Right, yeah. I just, I just wanted to ask about that. And, and I know that we've been extremely happy with them in the past, but I just wanted to know if we were scoring them or if ODOT scores them. Thank you.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Ordnance number seventeen dash O dash fifty-one has been approved. Ordnance number seventeen dash O dash fifty-two.
An ordinance to authorize, authorize transfers of funds, advances of funds, and revisions to appropriations and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Malinowski, please.
Thank you, Mr. Filippiak. Members of council, what you have before you is a, an ordinance that primarily moves an awful lot of cash from the city's general fund. Actually, in my, well, their lifetime, it's the equivalent of about five torpedoes, heavy weights. The best part about this ordinance is it's temporary. It's a temporary cash advance out of the general fund to be returned later.
Are you sweating?
The reason why I'm not sweating is we plan on returning roughly four million dollars in the same month back to our general fund for other projects. A good chunk of that was in the bond anticipation note that we issued last month, seven-point-five million dollars. It's a lot of movement of cash going on here, but our general fund, at the end of the day, should be sound when we close the books in May. And there's also applicable appropriation revisions that correspond to most of this related to the notes, and I would recommend approval. Thank you.
General?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Ordnance number seventeen dash O dash fifty-two has been approved. Ordnance number seventeen dash O dash fifty-three as amended.
An ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a Menter incentive grant with Highland Electronics, Inc., and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Filippiak?
Thank you, Madam President, and members of council, we, we all agree that these are the best parts of our agenda, right? We're very pleased to be able to welcome Highland Electronics Incorporated into our community. This is a large industrial project with an investment of over eleven million dollars in the construction of a building that could exceed one-hundred-and-eighty thousand square feet. And I'm gonna leave the details to Mr. Traub, who has worked very hard with the company to welcome them to our community.
Thank you, Mr. Filippiak, and, and members of, of council. The bags in front of me were probably a giveaway that we were gonna be talking about an economic development project this evening. And as has become the, the custom, I, I think it's important to understand a little bit about what this, what this company is all about. A little bit different, a little bit lower tech than certainly the groundbreaking many of you were able to attend today, but nevertheless, certainly a company in the industrial sector creating a significant number of jobs in, in our community and making a significant investment in a physical plant. In fact, such a significant difference that the information that Mr. Filippiak had in the staff report turned out to be out of date, that information was shared with us that, in fact, the total project investment, rather than being eleven million, is actually sixteen and a half million, and eleven-point-six million is in land and, land and building. The payroll numbers, both in terms of payroll and number of employees, is still accurate as are the anticipated project start dates. And I would share with, with members of, of council the fact that the final site plan approval is scheduled for the next planning commission meeting a week from, a week from Thursday. So, the term of fast track comes to mind, and this, this company, as Mr. Filippiak indicated, is anxious to get underway. These are the various components that, that come into the, to the company used in a variety of applications as is identified in the staff report, but primarily a distributor of electronic connectors. There is some assembly, modest assembly that, that takes place within the, within the facility, but we're primarily looking at a, a very large warehouse where the, the payroll, as I indicated, is, is a very significant one. And based on those guidelines that we have had in place for, for some years, the grant offer is identified in the, in the staff report, that being forty percent of the payroll taxes in year one through three, and then fifty percent in years four through ten. I would indicate that there are representatives of Highland Electronics. I believe Mr. Kish would like to offer some remarks if council would so entertain those.
Please come forward.
Evening.
The counterpart here. My name is Sam Kish. I am the operations manager for Highland Electronics. Along here with me, Ed, from our corporate office in Wilmington, Mass. For any sports fans here, don't hold against us, Boston. Get that out of the way. Currently, we occupy a hundred thousand square foot facility where we are landlocked and out of space. We've had capacity issues for several years while our business continues to grow, which prompted us to explore our options. We had two options. One was to find an existing building or to build new. About sixteen months ago, we started the search. We looked all over the greater Cleveland area and could not find any existing buildings that met the demand of going high. So, we wanted to go to forty-foot clear is what we're looking to do. At that point, we then switched gears and started to look at the land that could accommodate our needs. We initially started with eight locations, and within the first couple of months, we had the search narrowed down to three locations with Menter being one of them. As a company, this is important, as a company, when we decide to relocate any of, any of our facilities, the most important piece we take into consideration is employee retention. So, we have a fair amount of long-term employees, and we didn't want to lose any of them due to a relocation of the facility. We did some mapping of our, of where our staff lives, and it was clear that Menter was the right location to pursue. We decided in late summer two thousand and sixteen that Menter was our choice, and our real estate broker began discussions with Brian Osborne and Ron Traub. Just to touch on a couple of things, I think there was some, some information that Ron put in about the building. Just in addition to that, as I mentioned, forty-foot clear was important to us. The facility's gonna be automated with three to four thousand feet of conveyor throughout the, the picking system. And we've also spent, or we're going to spend about a million and a half on a new warehouse management system that'll control the receiving, picking, packing process along with the, the automated conveyor. The, just rough, the rough volumes just in, in boxes today, our facility averages about twenty-five hundred. In five years, we're anticipating that to be three thousand twenty-five boxes out the door, and in ten years, about thirty-five hundred a day. That'll speak a little bit to, to Highland.
Sure. Just to give you a little bit of background on Highland and who we are and what we do, mention that we're wholesale distributor of electronic components. We sort of kid around about connectors are us. So, we are, we distribute electronic connectors, relays, switches, fuses, fan assemblies, no semiconductors, no, no smart stuff other than getting into, into the sensor world. Founded in nineteen seventy-four, our original founder is the sole owner today. So, it's a privately-held company. I joined the company in nineteen ninety-seven, which was a year before we actually acquired Gateway Megatech, was a local company in Highland Heights. They became part of the Highland family in nineteen ninety-eight. And I'm very happy to say, Sam mentioned about employee retention and how important it is to us. Sam was one of the employees that, that came to us through the Gateway acquisition. He and a number of the key employees at, at Highland are still with us today, twenty years later. It's been a very good marriage. So, we, today, we operate everywhere from Boston to Seattle to San Diego to Orlando and everything in between, about twenty-three sales offices in North America. We're also operating now in Asia, in Hong Kong, Singapore, mainland China, and just acquired a small company in Germany. So, I personally spent about half of my life overseas in the last six months or so. But in any case, we, as I said, we've been in northeast Ohio for twenty years now. It's a perfect location for us in terms of a logistics distribution area, and we're really looking forward to, to continuing that. So, thank you for having us and thanks for, thanks for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ron, did you have any follow-up to that, or?
No, I do not. Thank you.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Move to amend.
Okay, amended.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Move to suspend as amended.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Don, Mr., excuse me, Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Move to approve.
As amended.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Don, Mr., excuse me, Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Move to approve.
As amended.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Resolution number seventeen dash R dash one thirteen has been adopted. Second readings we have none, third readings we have none. Managers' report.
Thank you, council. Madam President, we have several pavement open-cut requests. The versts is from the GPD group for work related to providing water service at ninety-one-fifty Lakeshore Boulevard. Ask for your approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Resolution number seventeen dash R dash one thirteen has been adopted. Second readings we have none, third readings we have none. Managers' report.
Thank you, council. Madam President, we have several pavement open-cut requests. The versts is from the GPD group for work related to providing water service at ninety-one-fifty Lakeshore Boulevard. Ask for your approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Resolution number seventeen dash R dash one thirteen has been approved.
Thank you, council. Madam President, we have several pavement open-cut requests. The versts is from the GPD group for work related to providing water service at ninety-one-fifty Lakeshore Boulevard. Ask for your approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Thank you. And the second is for, is a request from Oco, Ohio, to provide water service to a new resident at eighty-one eighty-eight Garfield Road.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is also from Oco, Ohio, to repair a water main leak under, somewhere under Menterwood Drive.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
basin, detention basin project was resubmitted to the Army Corps of Engineers this past Monday. We've also installed ground monitoring wells this week at the site for the Corus request. The section four oh one EPA permit, water quality permit, is being reviewed concurrently. City anticipates at this point that both permits will be issued in time for a mid-October construction start date, so keeping our fingers crossed, we finally seem to be on a very good path with that project. The annual Just Kids Stuff Garage Sale will be held on Thursday, May eighteenth, at Garfield Park from nine AM to twelve PM. This is actually the biggest sale of children's items around the area, and we often have more than seventy vendors and more than a thousand people show up for that. It's actually kind of a fun event and gets a lot of people from outside of the community coming in. The annual Garlic Mustard Pull at Mentor Lagoons Nature Preserve and Marina will be held on Saturday, May twentieth, from nine AM to twelve PM. We encourage people to come out and help us eradicate this non-native invasive plant to make room for native seedlings and wildflowers, and everyone is welcome to participate. The spring plant and flower sale at Wildwood Cultural Center is also held this Saturday, May twentieth, from ten AM to twelve PM. The Wildwood Garden Club always has a very nice selection of outdoor plants and flowers at reasonable prices, and all proceeds benefit the Wildwood Garden Club, which goes directly back into enhancing the beauty of that facility. We have several new businesses that I want to announce here today. Citywide Solutions at sixty-eight oh one Hopkins Road, Antonik Art at sixty-nine eighty-eight Spinach Drive, The Fork Restaurant at eighty-five hundred Station Street, Crown Jewelry at ninety-five-seventy Mentor Avenue, Mentor Ridge Health and Rehabilitation at eighty-one fifty-one Norton Parkway, Eight-Below Ice Cream at seventy-six forty-one Mentor Avenue, and also want to announce our, this was alluded to earlier, but this is a, this is worth explaining, this is the shovel that we used today at the groundbreaking for the new DeNora Tech facility that was mentioned by Mr. Kirchner just earlier. This is a titanium shovel with a Ruthenian cover on it, proprietary material, probably one of the most expensive shovels ever used for groundbreaking, but, and I was saying earlier, that it's a shame that this, the amazing utility of this will never be actualized because we'll put this in our display case for the memories, but we want to thank all of the businesses that I mentioned earlier for their investment in the community, in particular, DeNora Tech, for staying with this project for a very long period of time. We've worked with them for over a couple of years on this project, and there were some hurdles, significant hurdles, that had to be overcome, but we had visitors in from Milan, Italy, celebrating this with us today, and it once again highlights our community as a spot for international industry and manufacturing in particular to continue to do business effectively, and they are the leader in their products in North America, and we're glad to call them Mentor their home. That's all.
Clerk's correspondence. Councils and receipt of Mentor Municipal Court monthly reports for March and April twenty seventeen, as well as a transfer of a liquor permit from Twisted Patty Group, Inc., to Totes Two R L L P.
Commission and committee reports. Councils and received the meeting minutes of Municipal Planning and Commission, May fourth, two thousand and seventeen, and the Board of Building and Zoning Appeals, May ninth, two thousand and seventeen. Before we go into old business, I was a little bit remiss, and I wanted to announce we have a guest with us this evening. We have Scout John Olenek, who is here working on his citizenship badge, so thank you for joining us today. Thank you. Okay, old business? New business? We have a lot of new business, actually. Okay, we have, oh, I'm sorry, and one thing we do have is, the City of Mentor has a vacancy on the Community Arts Commission for an expired four-year term ending December thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen. Mentor residents interested in the position must submit a resume with the completed city-supplied application for commission slash board appointment, reappointment form. For more information, contact the Clerk of Council at sheavoni@cityofmentor.com or call four-four-zero-nine-seven-four-five-seven-hundred. Deadline for submission is June first, two thousand and seventeen. Thank you.
Madam President, if there's no other ...
We have one more scout out there. Stand up, what's your name?
Oh, I'm sorry.
There you go.
I'm Shania Ann.
Nice to see you.
Are you working on a badge also?
Yes.
What badge?
A citizenship badge.
Citizenship also?
Oh, cool.
Okay, great.
Thanks for coming, you guys, appreciate it.
Mr. Landik, are you meeting with them?
I will be meeting with the scouts.
Great, thank you. Okay.
If there's no other business, I'll make a motion.
Second.
So moved.
That's a lot. Go cap.
A lot of good things.
Take that, everybody.